It's too good to harvest this issue. No, we don't harvest, we just, no. We don't reap anything very strong.
No? I'm good.
The problem with you have to.
I think it was against that.
Well, I mean, it was like.
Not the mental morality.
That's right.
Bob's thinking, don't cry dad.
Who they call it?
You don't want to go down.
Wouldn't they break?
Oh, it's not the same. It did have to do that much.
So Alicia's.
Not even one?
Was that?
Not even one.
Alicia's. So it would be the daughter. So Alicia's the one who's the daughter. So when they had the funeral, she had to watch her.
Do you want to do separate ones? Should we just use the ones we have on our desk?
I see Rosie going.
Earring.
All right.
And they put it in. You know, he's just sort of flipping mine over. He said, you know, he wanted you to chance.
Yeah.
I will make sure you don't look anymore.
Talk to the. Well, this scene.
It's pretty good that you're good.
So they literally.
Those are some of the.
Does it?
They're not going to, so they just were extremely pissed off, like, why would we want that stuff?
I haven't heard from Roberto.
Somebody just came in.
That's him right there.
So then we ended up, so we didn't stay.
There'll be a justice for all.
So we didn't stay.
Lawyer's charged by the minute. We only show up.
So while they, once they're big, the son of justice got him.
Lily goes, can you throw dirt in?
Yeah. And it's like. And like, funeral, the cemetery guy, what is it? What are you doing? He's like, we don't, because it made the big old end of the.
Oh, yeah.
Right. He's like, um, you know, you don't make president on top. And then if you guys want to put dirt in, that's when we put the dirt in. He was like, well, did you leave it out? Just leave it up to them.
Did James take it?
That's funny.
But yeah. Come now.
Funny.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's not illegal, it's just a.
I can, I can't believe.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's made sense. I just really, just didn't have time watching.
I just can't wait till. I can't wait.
It's a, it's a life.
One of six children. So much.
Thursday.
Thursday. Yeah. You know. I don't want to fight them.
You should. You can fight with yourself.
Well, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Farmington Board of Selectments meeting for Tuesday, March eleventh, twenty twenty five. If you'd all please rise and leave, let's allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. And that will move right on to item three, and that is to hear from the town manager and her report. Erica.
Good evening, everyone. Pretty short report today, but we've wrapped up all our walkthroughs with potential IT vendors. So tomorrow, Chief Charles and myself and Deputy Shane Cody and probably Cindy Julianus will be going over, or at least meeting with two of the potential vendors between tomorrow and Thursday. We've asked to talk to all of them just to have, you know, clarifying interview questions. There, it's not exactly apples to apples in all of them, so, which often happens in procurements like these. So we'll be wrapping that up and we'll have something on the agenda for March twenty fifth to select a vendor. We received the results of the twenty twenty four workers' compensation audit. That's, we, we paid the twenty twenty four bill in twenty four, but in the end of twenty four, they asked us to turn our actual payroll. And the closer you are, the better. It's pretty amazing this year that we came in within two hundred and sixty one dollars. That, and, and just to put that in perspective as to how often that doesn't happen. Our last three years, we've had adjustments of eighty one thousand nine hundred and seventy three dollars, seventy nine thousand two hundred and sixty four dollars and ninety four thousand six hundred and eighty four dollars. So two hundred and sixty one dollars is about as close to zero as you can get. And really, I have to give all the credit to Tammy Bureau, our treasurer. She did an excellent job with the analysis because that means when, when she turned in twenty twenty four data to begin with, she did a really good job of putting that all together and estimating where we would end up. So really want to thank her for her diligent work and, you know, without, without that kind of work, we can end up owing a lot more money at the end of the year. As you all know, we had a pedestrian hit by a vehicle in the crosswalk on Main Street in front of Scott Hall on the evening of March fourth. Thankfully, the young man only sustained the concussion and was quickly released from the hospital. Charges are pending for the driver. Actually, I think at this point, charges have been issued at this point, so, so this is after my writing. So that's generated a lot of discussion among the community around pedestrian safety, what the town should be doing. I'm happy to report that most of the suggestions that have come, the town's already doing. We've already been working with MDOT on a village improvement initiative, which is supposed to address the Main Street corridor through downtown and make improvements to pedestrian safety. Also, it's supposed to improve lighting, crosswalks, sidewalks, among other things on the streetscape. In the short run, we've put out traffic counters in that area, which also track speed data. We've placed a barricade in the center of the crosswalks, although today we should have had one of the MDOT-issued pedestrian and crosswalk. They're like a barrier, but they go in the center of the sidewalk and so you're seeing them, they're plastic. So we've got that out there to help draw attention. And we've also ordered in-road pedestrian crossing signs, which, again, we already have an installation of a new crosswalk beacon, which should have happened today. I will say that took a lot of effort on the part of our public works director. Those crosswalk beacons, we get them through a grant from the state. The one that we're replacing actually is a legacy from a grant that the university got a long time ago. So we're going to replace it though and put it under our control. We did have to borrow from, from Peter to pay Paul, so to speak. The beacons that we put out there today are actually ones that we received on another grant to go up on Middle Street. So what we're doing is we're still applying specifically for this location, but we'll swap the, swap the items out. So we've already been doing quite a bit out there. And I would just really remind everybody that no matter what there is there for signage or for lighting or anything, you really need to always be looking both ways because there's no amount of safety devices that we can put out that is going to make sure that everyone pays attention, that every driver is responsible, or even that pedestrians are going to be looking both ways. So always make sure you're following best safety practices. Make sure that the driver that's approaching has seen you, that they're slowing down, and don't proceed into the crosswalk without looking both ways. Be safe. That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. Marcia.
In that case, there's other questions coming.
Would you expect less?
No, I wish.
Ah, girl.
All right. With that, I report.
Oh, excuse me.
The department head reports. Any questions on the department report?
A couple?
Yes.
Just with regard to the, to the assessor, where are we on the, on the, the K?
K R T.
It's our time.
Yeah, we're still running to be done on April first. That's done with the data collection because that's when we have to have the values set. As long as the data collection is done, we meet the state requirement to have our values by April first. That doesn't mean that we'll be putting out values to the homeowners. We did ours about the same timeframe when I was in Winslow. We were meeting with homeowners in July and doing our commitment in August. So we sent out the letters to homeowners in the late June, early July timeframe. So there's still going to be a lot of data compilation, a lot of looking over all the data, making sure there hasn't been mistakes before we actually notify homeowners of their, and businesses.
That's kind of the expected timeline is to, is to be able to finalize the.
Everything should be finalized over the summer as far as getting with individual property owners about their assessments.
Working toward our goal of being able to figure out our tax commitment in late August is the most.
I've, I've read the riot act about getting the tax amendment done in August. I'm very assistive that that happens, so.
Okay. And in the clerk's report, the, the voting, the voting rolls, I'll ask you and then you, I'm sure you. So in, she said that, that the Secretary of State created a voter registration purge process for anybody who hadn't voted since two thousand sixteen. So a couple of questions. So does that mean that if somebody, for whatever reason, was still brown, but didn't vote, they would need to reregister? They're going to show up and discover that their registration has been purged? Or do they get a notice? Or do we have any idea about that?
Yeah, I won't pretend to know all the ins and outs of that. I was actually a little surprised to read that in her report. But they would need to reregister if they've been unregistered. We do always have people registering right at the polls, though. So we, if someone were to show up and was in that situation, we could take care of them right there and get them signed up. I, I don't think for our town, it was a huge number of people. I know that she said some of them that were purged were of very advanced ages and the assumption would be they haven't voted since two thousand sixteen because they're no longer with us. And there's some fairly specific rules through the Secretary of State about what it takes to purge a voter. So I can get more information on that. Have Diane reach out to you specifically and get more information, but I, I'm sure they would have to reregister to vote.
And is that the, really the only process in Maine that exists to clean up the voter rolls? Like, we have young people who graduate, either leave the college or leave, leave Mount Blue and they go out into the world and they end up voting somewhere else. And I assume we don't catch any of that unless they're voting in another town in Maine.
Right, we would catch the ones in Maine. Not sure how we would catch the ones out of state or if there's a mechanism in place for that. I'm sorry, I don't have better answers for you. I'm just, I'm not a clerk, so I don't.
Yep.
I'm sure to learn all this, but that is a good question and I can certainly follow up on that.
That's true. I was more concerned about the voter that shows up and has voted all their life, but for whatever reason, maybe they were ill or whatever. Anyway, they didn't vote for a while and they show up and suddenly they've been unregistered. But I guess that's just.
Just have to register that.
It's good, it's good for people to know. It's good to get the word out that there is a potential for that. Be prepared, you got to bring identification.
Just following up on that, is a notice sent to the last known address of the person that is being dropped from the rolls? Is any notification attempted to give to them that just said, oh, you know what?
She doesn't know, so, but maybe.
But that's a, that's a follow-up question perhaps.
Thanks.
My other question, I did have a question in regards to that. When we, I assume there's a death certificate that we get at the town when somebody passes away? Do we get a notification when somebody's deceased?
No, we not by the state.
Okay, so it would be at the state level, so the, the state has to notify the town whether that person's deceased or not.
Because you don't have to.
That's why it's taken on some of these probably a little bit to actually get.
If you don't actually have anything to close out, you don't get a death. So.
Any other questions on our?
Nope.
Dennis.
On the code of what, uh, report, he talks about safe voices, the apartment complex being canceled. And we had a grant application into the C D G B, C D G G.
C D G G.
Which one? I don't know which one.
Yeah.
Has that gone away as well or is that still, I assumed that they would be tied together at that point?
They canceled that application. At that point, they withdrew it. It's unfortunate, but they've lost their major source of funding. We really could have used that.
Yeah, I think it's unfortunate as well.
It's very unfortunate.
Just wasn't sure where that piece was based on the report. I was happy to see two new applicants for the Call Firefighter Department. Hopefully they'll pass all the required requirements and join in. The Public Works Department just, you had mentioned that you're sitting here. I'll put you on the spot about the fleet of trucks and equipment operational and so forth. I was just curious that last month's invoice for repairs to equipment seemed to have listed about thirty pieces of equipment that had been worked on during the month. So it sounds like everything we've had had been in the shop at, at one point or another. But this appears that everything is back up and functional operation at this point. The other thing is there are a couple of towing bills that I believe were for the sidewalk plow to take a visit down country. They don't give away those towings. Is that the old one or the new one? Don't say both, please.
The new one we had towed back to the garage.
Oh, okay.
The other, the old one we towed ourselves.
Okay.
And we towed some trucks to bang, one to bang off.
Yeah, I thought at least three tow bills. So it seemed to be more than what we could take care of locally at this point. But, but they're back, and they could be driven back. We don't have to tow them back.
They're all back.
Yeah, good. But the, I was just a little concerned about the sidewalk plows and, and the continued need, whether that's an equipment problem with the plows or an operator problem with the plower at this point. That was all, it just, my concern about that.
Do you want an answer?
That they have said that it's operational, I will let them ponder whether they wish to respond as to how great the plows are at this point. Would you like to respond?
No, everything is.
I can see the glaze on his face. The, um, other thing, what was the other thing? The treasurer's report on the twenty-two tax leads, thirty-five that went out and twenty-nine unpaid, remaining with two in the process of being sold at this point. So again, this is just a formal process in terms of leaning the property, putting on notice that there is outstanding taxes against that property. And a decision somewhere down the line if we wish to continue to proceed with any takings for properties to continue to be unpaid at that point.
The state has a very specific process that we have to follow. It's all laid out in statute, so the timelines are very specific. Once the final deadline has been reached and we don't have any response from the property owner at that point, we would be coming to the board and asking if you wanted to go through final, well, final pro closures done, but if these are properties you're going to want to sell. And you have the choice to do that or not to do it. There can be extenuating circumstances. There could be issues where, you know, it's definitely, if you have people living there, there's a whole additional process that has to be gone through. It's not as easy as just boom, we put it on the market and it's gone.
So these are added to the pre-two thousand twenty-two unpaid taxes, of which we have some, I assume.
Correct. We have a few. Tammy's been doing a pretty good job getting that list cleaned up. It was rather lengthy. During the, the turnover and the turmoil with the turnover of staff, I, it didn't get done for a while.
Out of priority.
Yeah.
And we had one that'd be seven years back.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else?
No.
All right.
Stay tuned.
Okay. Off to item five, and that is to discuss the flood mitigation at wastewater treatment plant. Joe.
I've got an idea to eliminate the water getting into the plant. What is it? What do you have me?
Can you calm down?
Only when you talk.
Everybody's seen this bank back in the back of the town office here, how steep it is. We've got the same bank down the plant. What I want to do is build an earthen berm like a horseshoe from one point on the bank around the plant to another. And I think some of you guys or all of yous have seen what it's projected to cost. And like anything good, it's going to cost money. But it's not just the dirt that's going to be placed there that will cost them money. That's about half the price, three point three million. The other half is, we've got probably thirty or more manholes that are in the flood zone that have to be sealed. That cost we can keep down. Alls we have to do is buy the, the manholes and we can put the manhole covers and frames in ourselves. So that would help there. And some of that earthwork, maybe we can do too. And we'd like to keep the, the plant running while it's flooding. So that would take pumps to pump the finished water out of, over the berm. Talked to D E P about this and they didn't see us have any problem with it. But we wouldn't need to buy any pumps. We've got six pumps that can handle that job. So pumps, they're probably fifty to sixty thousand dollars apiece. So those we've got. So we'd just be piping. What else is there? We'd have to pick up, we've got a wet well inside the plant that everything from town flows to and it's pumped up to the headworks. That would have to be raised up. It's like a well tile. It's a big round tank. Plunk one of those on there. And that we can do. We just have to buy the materials. So at this point, the six point six million is not that much. It will be less because we can do a lot of the work. But the longer we wait, the more money it's going to cost. And as far as getting the money, I've had an engineer scope this out for me, just to give me a preliminary, what are we getting into here? And he came back to me with that figure and he took what he found and he sent it to USDA because that's where most of the money would come from. And not, he just sent it in. He said it gets into a pool of other, other jobs that people want to do. And so now they're aware that we want to do this project. So like any good idea, there's naysayers to it, but I think it's something that we need to be thinking about seriously because in the past, these floods have caused damage and caused equipment damage, electric motors. And these floods are just getting worse. And this flood in particular, this last one, there was heavy scouring around the buildings. So we've got four tanks now, actually we have six, but the four that I'm worried about scouring away, those, them tanks can float if water gets underneath them. And there's the money right there. Not to mention the lab and the control room and the electric building. So up till now, the response has been walk away, let it flood. There's nothing you can do. But now here's an idea on the table. This is something we can do. And I welcome any phone call or visit or feedback from any mechanical minds or money mines to make this project afloat. I don't believe it's something we're going to do right away, but it's something we need to think about and I won't stop. Got questions?
Any idea on timeframe? You say most of the money hopefully is going to come from the USDA.
Yeah.
So we're in a pool with a thousand other swimmers at this point. No sense of timeframe. I mean, we can't do anything until we get approval.
I think also it could be done in increments. We could do part of the berm or all of the berm and none of the pumping or, or part of the, you know, we could, we could do a piecemeal. And this here would be something that an engineer would help us with also, you know, what, what to do in increments.
Yeah, it seems like the hundred-year floods are happening on a monthly basis.
Every other year.
We don't know how bad it's going to get.
Yeah, and these are the good old days.
Second question, Joe. In regards to, I, I mean, I understand the whole idea of building the berm. There's going to have to be a study done of what it does to displace the water upstream.
You look over that bank and you tell me there's not enough room. I mean, it just.
Well, I know, but you're going to be now burming water.
Right.
Out. So instead of that water coming to that area, it's going to go somewhere else.
I think it'll be so minimal that nobody's going to notice. This whole valley floods.
I understand.
And we're going to take probably a four acre chunk out of it.
Okay.
And I don't believe.
You don't think there'll be a problem?
It'll certainly be something that's addressed and the D E P's going to want to know that. We'll let them handle that.
Right. But that was just one thing I thought of at first. I mean, obviously you build a barrier that prevents water from flowing.
It's, the water's got to go someplace.
Right. So, because it, it would, wouldn't narrow in, would it?
Pardon me?
It wouldn't narrow in where the water's passing. I mean, obviously it will because you have the barrier around it, but.
Yeah, it would be a dam and the only place it's going to come in is infiltration through manholes. And there will be some infiltration. We're not going to be able to stop it all. But all these manholes that are in the flood plain will be sealed. It'll be others that have, that have taken it on. But that's why we would build up the wet well so that when it comes in, that's where everything goes.
Right.
It'll fill the wet well and, and outside the wet well will be dry.
Right. I guess it'd be interesting to see what their study would say.
Oh, yeah.
In regards to where the water, if it affects, you know, upstream.
Yeah.
And how much?
Maybe they'll confuse the salmon.
It might. I don't know.
For the, like the earth berm, would, like ditchings for, like summertime ditching road work? You know, that type of stuff over time, you know, like as far as what the material would be if it's, you know, just whatever we get out of the ditching around town? You know, if they could, if that's something, I don't, and I'm, that's more of a thought, just if that's right. And then if, if there was any.
First question, what's the material?
Yeah, because that could be a potential to save, you know, to, for the town, at least the towns portion of the project too. And like you said, especially if it was a multi-year thing.
Yeah.
Then they could use those, you know, the ditchings to help, help with that too. Yeah, that was my own question. I only two, Sam.
And I would like to hear from you guys from here on out. You have an idea, you know, I'm open to ideas. So you said you, you had at least touch base with D E P, but this would require a formal application.
Oh, yeah, and permit, yeah.
Okay. And the naysayers, where, where are the naysayers? Are they at Wolf Works or are they just general speaking? Is the guy working next to you down there? I mean, who's, who, what is the, what's the?
Well, the money, the money.
Oh, right. All right. So it's not the, it's not the idea, it's the cost.
Yeah, if it didn't cost anything, nobody would have anything to say.
Okay.
But it's going to cost a lot of money, so naturally people don't want to, you know. But to me, you know, try to replace that plant. How many millions is it going to take to replace it? If one of those tanks flows, I don't know what the price tag would be on that. Well, what if, they're side by each, what if two of them float? You know, they're going to be demolished and gone back from scratch. And so the price tag to not do it will be, could be more than the price that it could do it. It's not as proven.
The only other question I have is, is anybody else doing this? Is this just us or have you got any examples? Or will you have any other projects you can take a look at?
I'm, I'm a maverick. I'm sure there's other places that have, well, New Orleans.
That's semi-successful.
A lot, a lot of different activities going on as a result of the last two years.
Yeah.
I mean, down on the coast, there are multiple projects using different techniques to try to, to deal with, with erosion damage, different materials. I mean, there's all kinds of ideas floating around. I just, so I.
Might be something to get the Corps of Engineers on too.
Well, they'll have, I'm sure they'll have to be involved.
Yeah.
They will.
Okay. Thanks.
We did work with an engineer to get, to have this idea drawn out. So my guess is they've done it somewhere.
Yeah.
It's not a completely new idea. Another consideration just to throw out there, and again, it's what ifs and, you know, again, I always, my saying is, I've been setting a fire in my kitchen for the last twelve years and it hasn't caught on fire yet and burnt down the house. So I'm just going to not think it's a bad thing. But the other thing that can happen with these floods is that we could have a discharge, which could end up costing a lot of money. And the D E P and the EPA have gotten fairly serious about those.
Well, every time that plant floods, it discharges. And, you know, what are they going to do? Come and yell at us? Write us a ticket?
Get rid of them.
No, but they do, they do find us.
We don't want to find out.
Right.
No.
That's practice.
Well, I've, I've been in towns that have had discharges. It's when they're considered an illegal discharge. Some discharges they expect to happen.
Right.
And.
It's just an act of God.
Yeah, it would be an act of God, but yes, I know what you mean. It's not the best practice, but just, you know, flush out the system.
You sharing would appreciate it.
Anyway, so obviously more to come in regards to that. I mean, obviously there's, whatever we do, there's a lot involved. I'm sure we have permitting and this engineer, that engineer figuring out.
Keep the ball rolling.
Yep.
Gotcha. Appreciate it.
Any other questions on this?
Nope, I'm good.
Alright.
So I can go home and watch the love vote?
Sure. Alright, moving nine to six, and that is discuss the downtown village improvement program. See Phil hiding in the back there?
Yep, tried.
Thanks for inviting me tonight.
A little more feeling than that.
Okay, so Erica did touch on this topic a little bit in the department report, but Erica, town manager report, sorry. So to explain the V P I, the Village Partnership Initiative, this is a grant program. It's designed to be available in, to willing communities that have agreed upon a local vision. So this is what the M D O T is saying. So village projects can vary from small spot improvements to very large. Five hundred thousand dollar projects all the way up to ten to fifteen million dollar projects. So it's a, it's a once in a lifetime investment, so you can only do it once, you know, if, if you so choose to apply for it. So large spot, large projects are, there's federal funds that they're involved with. So it's a different concept. So as Erica mentioned, we did take a, a site visit with the M D O T in the town of Farmington. Erica, myself, Ken Charles, Tim Hardy from Farmington, and available from M D O T was Steve Landry. He's a state traffic engineer. Matt Dross, state planner. Tony Bellew, regional engineer. Tim Susie, a regional traffic engineer. So we did tour downtown Farmington, looking at different areas for pedestrian safety and traffic issues. And they did recommend us to approach and apply for the V P I spot, spot improvement grant, so. So that's what's going on. And so the V P I, so the focus for V P I, so this program will be used by communities to better define the limits of villages, improve safety using gateway treatments, traffic calming and pedestrian enhancements for safety. So types of projects. These projects can range from gateway treatments, markings in a village area to slow traffic, most of all to improve pedestrian and ADA compliance. So this, V P Is are focused on everything outside of the roadway, which is sidewalks, better lighting, you know, anything to enhance pedestrian and bicycle, you know, bicycle safety, I guess. So we're, we're currently under contract with the M D O T under a M P I. And the M P I covers everything, roadway and pedestrian safety, so. So I think to touch base on a little more on what Erica talked about, so today, today what already took place. So in November, we did a site visit with the M D O T. And then in November, also Farmington got awarded the M P I grant for one point five million dollars for the M P I project. So this has already happened. Erica signed the documentation and contract with the M D O T, so. So we already have one point five million on the table towards grant. So upcoming tentative schedule and plan. So I feel this is what really needs to happen. And I'll forward this to Erica so she can pass along. I just built the tentative schedule. So March twenty twenty five, so as we all know, this is gonna be the annual meeting in March. So what we budgeted for towards design and engineering for the M P I and the V P I application process, so the taxpayers and citizens are to vote forty five thousand dollars for local tax money towards engineering design for Main Street. So since we've already got awarded that grant in November, that forty five thousand dollars will double. So that equals ninety thousand dollars in engineering for all of downtown and Main Street.
That's cool.
So after the vote, whichever, you know, if it's approved, so April and May of twenty twenty five, we're gonna put an R F P out for engineering firms, you know, a bid, you know, for this. So June and July, this is basically where it all begins of twenty twenty five this year. So we're gonna have meetings for design input with a select board and public and the engineering firm present that, that you all approve. Meeting number one starts with input for design preferences. So we come to the table, you know, for everybody's opinions on what do you wanna see incorporated in the plans? We've been through this before with, you know, the High Street project from Street. So that's gonna be the first meeting. The engineer's gonna take the information back from, you know, from abroad, from everybody, put it on a consensual design, draft it up on plans. Meeting number two, the engineer's gonna come back with a set of plans for review, say, okay. So is this what everybody likes? Any more changes? Would you like to add more street lamps? Would you like to change curving from, say, batumness to granite? You know, stuff like that. So that's the second meeting. And meeting number three, then we'll return to the board for the final set of drawings and the final design. So this is gonna take place in June, July this year. So come August and September of twenty twenty five, we're gonna start to release construction bids on that final design to find a contractor, you know, a construction contractor. And that's August, September twenty twenty five. September and October of twenty twenty five, we're gonna come back to the board, you know, to, for approval of a contractor, after the bid has been released. May twenty twenty six, phase one, that's when we break ground. That's when all construction starts, starts. And then May twenty twenty seven, phase two, is gonna be the wrap up of everything. The reason why, not the reason why, but, so the M D O T plans to build, rebuild the Town Farm Road this coming season. That'll give us an opportunity to redesign everything, get it on plans. And we may see a little more heavy traffic come through Main Street only because of rebuilding Town Farm Road. But twenty twenty six is gonna flip well. We're gonna put all the heavy traffic on the town farm after it's reconstructed, reconstructed by the M D O T. And like I said, I'll send this tentative schedule out to Erica and Leah and, and that's, this is a similar process, you know, like we've been through already with High Street. And it's gonna involve a lot of input through the design process and, you know, it's gonna involve a lot of, I guess, heavy engineering, compliances, you know. And as we look at it locally and, you know, municipality, we look at finances too. So if we stay consistent with what we're budgeting for, you know, this year, we're trying to appropriate eight hundred thousand dollars locally towards Capital Road. And if we do that consistently for the next three years, we can stay on track and get this done through M P I grants, you know.
Questions, Phil?
Well, just early on in your presentation, you said those magic words, fed funds. So are we on solid ground here or is it shifting turbulent downstream raging waters?
There's no absolute fed funds right now, which is one of the reasons that we're going to do what we can. We're gonna apply for both. But we're gonna put the bulk of it on the M P I. Because we can get a lot of the stuff we'd wanna get done with the village of M P I done. It's just the funding is a little more limited. Our maximum on an M P I is one point five million dollars for a project. The V P I would open that up to a bigger pool of money, but there's no guarantee.
But in the interim period with the design and the letting the construction, things will hopefully settle out a little bit. So we'll have a better idea of just how shaky it is.
And the benefit to the M P I grant, it's state funds. It doesn't involve federal funds. It's a different administrative, or local administrative process rather than a V P I. When you start to involve federal funds, there's heavier audits. There's, they hold you to regulations. There's heavier certifications. So that's why Erica was saying that even on phase two, we're gonna still go for another M P I for, you know, backup, another one point five million dollars. And then we can rely on a potential V P I once a federal government release, you know, funds. Yeah, we'll still have a backup.
But again, states are still heavily invested in federal funds for, for a lot of pass-through projects and then fund a lot of programs they run moving on. So again, it's a concern.
Any other questions?
No. I just, I'm just, I'm not clear on the sequencing between the, the V P I and the M P I. Does one, does one follow the other? Do they overlap?
You can overlap and apply for both of them at the same time. So the way the M P I funds work, it's every region, state region, we're a region three. They get designated funds for M P I funds. So, so we have to jump on the M P I grants before, say, the next community next to us does. So it's first come, first served. And that's same with the V P I. So the V P I, you can overlap them. I did have that question with the M D O T. You can, can join them together. So, you know, you can still, I guess, receive the funding and commence the same project and work scope under both grants.
Would we do that or would we not? Is there a preference from your perspective, one way or the other?
We would. It'd be easier to incorporate them all in one, you know, one lump, hire an engineering firm to, you know, to say, administrate all the, you know, paperwork. So in-house, I'm gonna start to build a takeoff. We used to hire derago engineering often, more often, a lot. So this is, this is the first year I built a takeoff and generated, you know, the first space construction project which got accepted by the M D O T. So I'm gonna start to work on the second M P I project in-house as well. The reason why the benefit of going in-house is because we don't have to call an engineer right now and say, hey, can you apply for this? And then stick with them through the whole, you know, whole process. So it'll give us more options, you know, when we put out the R F P for engineering, so.
With the V P I, so you were mentioning the spot, like the spot grant versus the one applied to a bigger project itself and once. And it's like, you said, once, it's like one shot, once in a lifetime deal. So does that matter whether it's like a spot one or it's a bigger project, like you get one spot one and one bigger project? Or is there a difference, you know?
I'm not a hundred percent on that. Like I said, there, yeah, there's a spot improvement project and then a large transformative project.
So probably like the larger one, like the once in a lifetime one.
Yes, exactly.
And then are you allowed to use the V P I funds to offset the towns portion contribution to the M P I? You know, is it what we have to match?
Yes.
The M P I's a match.
Yep.
Can we use the V P I funds for our section of the match?
Use grant funds, a paper grant fund.
We're gonna tell the M P I that we're using V P I funds for their match. We're gonna tell V P I we're using M P I funds for their match and we'll be on set. And for the media and the road, that's a joke.
Still Phil had a question. So obviously this year, the focus on the road program, other than all the work you do and paperwork and all that to get everything going, is with the Town Farm Road finish getting that squared away in regards to working with the state on that M P I?
Yep.
And then, right, 'cause there's not gonna be enough timeframe.
Right, exactly. And we did actually get approved and we're on a contract for another M P I on top of the Main Street M P I, which is the Town Farm Road Oak Street. It's, it's the urban compact side of the Town Farm Road that we're responsible for. So this, the M D O T awarded us the grant just to do our section as well, which worked out great.
And did they, are they gonna address or are they gonna address anything with the four-way for indication of a four-way?
So, yes.
As opposed to driving through the four-way, coming down the road?
Call the road.
I would call you a name, but I'm not gonna, anyways, Phil?
Yeah, so that's something, so the law states anything over ninety thousand dollars in construction. This is the Oak Street side within the urban compact. It's upwards of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. The way the law states anything over ninety thousand dollars in construction municipality, we have to have a third-party licensed engineer to design it. So I, that's something that I think that we should, you know, tell the engineer and say, hey, you know, is there something we can do better?
Right.
Yeah, and then bring it to the table.
Well, I just, I mean, I personally, I don't know how many times tractor-trailer trucks coming down the Town Farm Road just driving right through the four-way. And I, they just, something about they do not, for some reason do not see the stop sign. I just, they don't, obviously, most of them are not local truck drivers, so it's, it's definitely a problem. No, I don't know if it's under the, to the care, 'cause, I mean, I've just talked with the owner of doors and we literally were talking about this subject and watching tractor-trailer truck drive right through. We're like, okay. So I just, if, can be mentioned to the state about is there anything visibility-wise that stands out? 'Cause I don't think it's like, I don't think their intent is to drive through the four-way. It just, you can tell that they're just driving along and it's not even recognizing.
Yeah, exactly.
It's one of those weird spots.
Ken recently brought up the subject of the new Beans Corner four-way intersection, how it's illuminated, how it's, you know, it's better visible.
It's like a circus down there. I saw it last night.
I mean, at least this is a four-way that's been in existence for a very long time. Unlike that one, which I still have to get used to, like, oh, there's four-way, you know. But alright, well, that'd be good, I think, if you could mention that to them and maybe Ken's idea of illumination there. So, I mean, I've seen a cruiser to park there by the park, which I'm sure helps a little bit.
Any other questions?
There's more to come.
The Ford project. A lot of times we put a facelift down there.
I know the other thing was, I was gonna ask you, is the, are you planning on including the wall at Hippick Field?
Yes, that's actually in the takeoff that I generated for approval. So the, the D O Ts actually were the wall too, which got approved, so.
Okay. And then are you improving the sidewalk there? Are you thinking on the outside of the wall as well? Or was it talk about change?
Yeah, this.
There's more to come.
Yeah, more to come in design, but, yeah. The D O T made some suggestions going through there, you know, whether keeping it four lanes or turning it into three lanes going through there.
Three lanes and having a turning lane or?
It's not a turning lane, yeah.
I can hear the screams now.
But you have to have a sidewalk there. Somebody's put the plow against the fence. I mean, the snow.
Right now, the sidewalk goes to the football field.
Yeah.
There in the grandstand.
Any other questions on this? Alright, thanks, Phil. With that, moving on to item seven, and that is to approve the minutes of February twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. And a motion of second to approve the minutes.
Any questions?
With Dennis's approval.
There were just a couple of things. For one, under the, I don't know, second paragraph down of number five, where it talks about the, well, the Mills list fiscal year is not as predominant. And he did give us a handout here, which was very helpful for five counties that show, in effect, the five, including the two small counties, running at forty seven percent fiscal year versus, I'm just curious what the rest of the state looks like. And I assume most of these are the larger towns and cities. And most of the ones that are calendar year are still smaller municipalities. Yes, ma'am?
So I have tasked this lovely young lady next to me with doing the research on fiscal year, when town meetings are held and when tax payments are due. So right now, as of today, or actually yesterday, listen, I have a list of every town in the state that's above a population of one thousand, who is on fiscal years and, and who is, not everybody has a town meeting. Keep in mind, if you're a town council town, usually you will not have a town meeting. It's only for select boards. So not everybody has one of those. I am gonna be dispersing the list to you all. I just kinda wanted to analyze it a little bit and put it into, do the, the metrics on it and give you that as well. The problem with comparing us to other towns in particularly Franklin County and Somerset County is that the vast majority of towns are really not good comparables for Farmington. is that the vast majority of towns are really not good comparables for Farmington. When you're looking at a budget of fifteen million versus a budget of a couple million, that's not comparing apples to apples. So to compare us in, in Franklin County, the only real comparables we would have, and they're still quite a bit smaller than us, are Jay, Wilton, Kingfield, Carabassett Valley. And Rangeley. And all of them are on fiscal years. So that's getting a little bit more towards what towns our size do. Additionally, there are a couple of towns, as I said before, that are moving to fiscal years from calendar years this year. And the cited reasons on those, actually Belgrade next door is one of them that's going to a fiscal year. Because it is very difficult to get your budget right when your county and your school system are on fiscal year budgets. So we'll have a lot more to pass on to you, but that's kind of a good segue to you wanting to bring up the discussion about the fiscal year as well.
Moving forward, you know, move back.
Yeah.
After, after town meeting, I think that's something that we need to wade through and make a decision this year so for our next cycle. We've got something in place.
I don't know that we're ready for this year's town meeting to.
No.
You know, at this point with the, with the revalve and so forth. But you have, after, after.
After town.
Thanks for deciding that.
And one other comment on that, Paul, the presentation that Paul did the other night, he made a comment in there that it means taxpayers are going to have to pay two fiscal year, two years' worth of taxes in twelve months. And that was also repeated in the newspaper from a follow-up summary of what the meeting was. But the truth is, I pay my bills in October. The next October, I get another bill, I pay it. So within a period of slightly over twelve months, I'm paying two years' worth of taxes. Fiscal year or calendar year, that isn't going to make any difference. You know, that's the, that's who we.
Well, who we?
You're welcome. When you pay, you pay in October, you pay in following October.
The first year you'll have a, you'll have two.
So with the fiscal year, you're going to pay November, October for November. Then you're going to pay six months in April, May.
Right.
And then you're going to pay six months in November. So November to November, you're paying for two years in one year. It's the same as the total.
In reality, the, the reason that it doesn't work out to be more, what it's doing is shifting that payment forward. But again, you're still paying for the same six-month period. Right now, when you pay for November, you are paying for the January through December timeframe. You're just not paying till November. The transition. The six-month transition budget would cover from January to June and you'd be paying for those six months.
Right.
And then you would pay for the next fiscal year on two payments. It would be split into two, so you'd pay half in the October-November timeframe, whatever the board decides for due dates, and the other half in the April-May timeframe, or maybe even June, depends on what the board decides on that. So you're not really paying more. You're just having to pay earlier than you had before.
So you pay a year and a half in six months, that first year. That first transition year.
No, you pay November. And you pay May, the six months.
You pay a full bill.
Right, which is a year and a half.
And then you pay a half a bill. So that's a year and a half.
In that six-month period and in the one-year period, you pay the other six months. So it's still what you've been paying, just six months difference for half of the next year's taxes. So, yeah, that's the reality of it.
Do you amend the minutes of anyone?
I know, that's what I'm.
Well, the minutes didn't say that. No, I'm not looking to amend the minutes on, on these because we don't do verbatim and I understand that.
Right.
But I do have an amendment to the minutes.
Okay.
In the next section.
All right, section six.
Section six. So we had a motion to recess at eight thirty-four and the motion passed five to nothing. It doesn't say when we came back in from recess because we needed to print off the updated budget request. And I just think we should put in when we came back in session at this point. The other thing was, then there was a motion by Selecting Bell to strike Article nineteen. And I think I would like to have some verbiage in there as to what Article nineteen was, which was the article supporting the Franklin County, whoever. Development, thank you.
Do you want the full article in there? Because there was a lot more than just that.
No, no, but just basically that it was the article supporting them.
Well, no, there was more than that.
There was a zero-dollar article.
There was also the description about how the county should be supporting all the outside agencies. There was a lot more detail than just that.
Okay, but it was basically the county development request for money that was cut out of the budget. And I just think that that was the summation. I don't think we need to put the whole article in, but we need to put a little.
But in my wording, I also stated about the county portion of that. We've discussed this. Last year, we discussed about the fact that the county took.
If you would like to have that included, I have no objection to including it. I just think to say Article nineteen is bare bones less than what in fact we did discuss. And at that point, there was a second and the motion passed four to one. It then does not say that we had a motion to pass the budget with that Article nineteen out of it. And I think there should be, we did have another motion at that point.
We had another motion on the warrant articles. The budget itself did not include the Greater Franklin Development Council, so you approved the budget as is. The warrant article was in there because the budget committee asked to consider that request, but it wasn't part of the budget. So you don't need another vote to approve the budget. The budget stands as it was. It did not change.
Okay, all right. So clarification, just because I'm confused, perhaps someone else was in our listening audience. Those that aren't watching the love vote.
All right, so are you, are you making a motion to amend this?
I would like to move that we amend the language, both with the time of re-adjournment, if you will, and with additional language for the Article nineteen that was removed. The vote is fine.
I would amend my motion to include those. I would amend my motion to include those.
I would second the amended position.
Okay. Have we got everything? Anything else?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Better motion in a second with the amendments on that. Any other questions or comments on the minutes? All of the neighbors. All right. With that, we'll move on to item eight, and that is to discuss other business. Erica, do you have anything else tonight?
Well, so we, we talked about the other business with the fiscal year out of turn, but got confused about what we were talking about. I had already sent. I had already sent out the town caucus budget committee vacancy notice from the county, but I did not send it to Josh and Byron because you won't be here anymore when the caucus happens. So, but the other three of you have received that, that notice, except for those of you who had not working email. So you, how about you take the hard copy?
And I need it because I.
You just do interior pigeon?
Yeah. I don't know if anybody else was dying to get on the budget committee, but.
Yeah, Dick is.
Dick is.
We get two districts.
Two districts, because I, I.
I say, I don't see one?
No, I got a last year. Dennis took my spot.
So that was my question. We discussed this earlier. Am I only a one-term fill-in, one-year fill-in? Am I up again? Or was I appointed to the rest of a three-year term or was it a full three-year term? Nobody knows. So I'll have to go and ask them.
You'll have to ask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At this point. We have three for District Two, which is this side of the river. So, I mean, here we are.
And we've done that before and I can say that doesn't work well for us.
What doesn't?
If there's three, we've had three Farmington Board members before.
We have. District Two is, where are you going to get a third? District Two, District Two is only Farmington.
It's only?
It's just.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
According to one of the county commissioners, he believes the way it reads that Farmington could actually caucus in both. And caucus because.
Well, we can't.
We have somebody on the other side of the river. You know, I don't think it matters where you live. If you're a farmer who's Lincoln.
We have to caucus in District One as well because we have, we have citizens who live there.
Right.
Whether that caucus would elect a, an additional Farmington person, who knows?
Why Farmington go to, I don't know if you can caucus both at the same time. This is the county commissioner trying to addressing this and the rest of them be able to kind of fix so much.
Are we going to throw a new member of the board under the bus?
We might have two, we should have two new ones.
They're going to have to create an opportunity for us to caucus in both, with both groups, even if the, even if the, the District One caucus is unlikely to elect another Farmington selectman. And then, of course, in the following year, the floating member.
Right.
Gets appointed by District Two's, which is Josh Farmington, District Two's commissioner. So we could have four just out of District Two, but that's next year, not this year.
And now we've got three of you at a meeting and it is a public meeting supposedly, but you're a caucus when you're all together.
We'll put Dennis at the end of the table.
I think all the, I think all the. I think they advertise them. Don and only go there.
I'm pretty sure if there are three board members together, it constitutes a.
Right, I think that they advertise the meetings.
Yeah, as well as they advertise at the head of town.
The county does.
Hopefully the county will do that.
But I think to your.
They're, they're the ones that are inviting us in.
Yeah, yeah, that's their responsibility.
Absolutely.
Dennis, I think to your point, I think everybody on the committee is getting re-elected or getting elected.
And that's fine. But I read that and it was clear to me, whether I'm patient or foul. I know I'm foul sometimes.
If you don't show up, more than likely you will get elected.
Maybe you will.
Oh, yes, you will.
You'll elect me even if I don't show up.
You'll be a child.
I understand that.
We should, we probably should inquire of the, of the newly elected selected when they become newly elected, whether either one of them is interested as well. I'm definitely interested, Dennis is, and you.
I've been on it before. You know, if, if there's a position, I don't want to take, if, like I say, one of the new guys wants, they want it, I have no problem.
But we'll have a meeting before the caucus.
But I, I just want to make sure that.
So I think you all should do something for it.
It didn't seem appropriate to send it to the two who haven't been elected yet.
I'm like, how am I going to be all this? I don't like talking to me. But anyways, any other business there?
I believe you on.
All right.
Yes.
Four. Move along. I didn't know if Joe had anything or not. Did you want to say anything, Joe? I saw you were here, so you don't normally come to our meetings.
No, no, it's, it's fascinating. No, I did want to.
Busy, busy.
I did want to comment and first to, to thank you and the, the town. Erica is the town manager for quickly installing the new flashing lights that are across from our Scott Residence Hall. As you know, we had a student who was hit by a car last week. And of course, you know, you also had a, a resident who was killed a few months ago. So I wanted to talk about the safety of our pedestrians. You know, we, we bring, we bring students here, advertise that this is a safe campus, a safe community. And, you know, I want, I just spoke with students who are, we're trying to recruit. I want to be able to continue to, to do that. Our students and the town are so intertwined that our students are passing along across Main Street many times a, a day because we have residence halls on one side of the street and we have most of the campus on the other side of Main Street. And then, of course, in High Street, we have students going across that as, as well. So, and I also know that the town doesn't have full control of the street because it is a, a state street. But I, I really want to work with you and, and the town to see what we can do to, to make the area safer for our students. Now, look, pedestrians sometimes are not paying attention, you know, they step out, they're distracted. Some, everybody's got these phones these days. They're either reading it or they've got earbuds in and, you know, want to educate pedestrians to be vigilant because if you step out and the car doesn't see you, that's a, that's a problem. But since this accident happened, I've received so many emails from students and faculty and staff about close calls. You know, that sometimes drivers are either going too fast, they don't, they don't see the, the pedestrian or sometimes they're annoyed that they have to stop and sometimes they don't stop. And, you know, so we have a, a problem on both sides, from the pedestrian side as well as the, the driver side. So, you know, I really want to explore how we might work with the state thinking of various ways that we can make Main Street and certainly High Street safe. High Street, we put in that bump. Well, you should see these people flying over that.
Oh, I watch. Yeah, it is.
That bump, you know, there's, so that's, you know, that's a problem. Now, today I had to go to the legislature in Augusta and as I went through Belgrade there, I'm at twenty-five miles an hour, you know, very, very slow going through there. If anybody stepped out, I would be able to stop instantly there. I mean, that's, that's one consideration, should we try to slow down the traffic on, on Main Street. The other, the other thing I would think that we should consider is these big trucks that come through Main Street. Is there a way in which we can think about rerouting them? Even if they just go through Broadway and go down Front Street, they wouldn't be coming across the, the campus. Which, sort of, you know, when I think of the campus, I think of both sides of, of Main Street. Certainly not going to eliminate traffic, but these huge trucks that go down there, I think that would make it, make it safer. So those are things that we should be in discussion with the main DOT about. And, you know, we'll continue to do what we can to educate students about, about safety. But, you know, close calls, we don't want to have a, we don't want to have another one or certainly we don't want to have a, a fatality that will, that'll wake us up to do something more, more dramatic. So I certainly, you know, thank you for the actions that you are currently taking and getting the new, new flashes and the better lights. But I think we probably should sit down and see if we can do, do more together.
Yeah, definitely. I think lighting in that area too. I don't know if it's a reflection of, it seems dark and I don't know if it's a reflection from the buildings in something it does there. I don't know. It's kind of strange, the lighting in that spot.
Yeah. And, and look, I mean, coming up the, the hill right where the sweat winter is, you know, people, people go pretty fast, you know?
Always have.
Zooming, zooming up there, you know, to try to get, you know, before I get into Belgrade, you know, I've got this forty-five degree and then forty-five miles per hour and twenty-five miles per hour and. I've got this forty-five degree and then forty-five miles per hour and twenty-five miles per hour and, uh.
But I can't say, my son lives in Belgrade and you're one of the few that actually follow it. So he has the same complaints down there. I, I can tell you, it's.
Yes, yes, but they have it and they, they flash it and they tell you exactly how fast you're going and, uh, got the lights going. So I, I mean, I think we're, uh, the same type of community, that, uh, you know, especially with students walking back and forth. So I'd just like to work with you on this.
I just, um, that's just probably, that, that's only a dorm on that side, am I right?
That's right.
Is there any chance that you have empty dorms on the other side of campus to stop the people from having to cross Main Street to begin with?
No, because those are, I mean, you know, we have three hundred beds over there, you know, it's just too, we do.
You do have other dorms that are open though, right?
We do, oh, we, we have dorms that are being, uh, used and we have some that have vacancies. But we don't have enough that we could take all of the students in that residence hall and move them onto the other side of campus. We need, we need those and those are mostly, of course, year students.
I think there's obviously more to come from Phil and Erica on the board and sure, everybody will be happy to work with the university and figure out ways, so.
Yeah.
I think the meeting that Phil's talking about, having a meeting this summer with the engineer, engineering firm, is like they kick off the project or before we kick off the project, like maybe input during that meeting would be good to.
Well, the redesign I think is helpful. Uh, I also think, should think seriously about getting some of these big trucks off the road and, uh, and getting the, the traffic.
The Poland what, the Poland spring trucks aren't supposed to come through town anyways. They're mandated to go the Town Farm Road, but they don't, you know, they, they just don't. I live on a little three-house road that has ninety-degree turns on it and they do U-turns on my road, which is quite humorous to watch.
Yeah, I mean, that's definitely a discussion with the state on that, I mean, it is a state route, so I mean, to, you know, actually come up with some way. I mean, you could encourage the trucks to use an alternate route, but I don't think you're gonna be able to dictate that they can't go through town. I can think of the, obviously this incident that happened with the vehicle and it was one maybe ten years ago? I think a student got hit at some point in time, somewhere on Main Street there. But that was by a vehicle as well, so I understand what you're saying with the trucks. I, 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 I think I know where you're coming from, but I think it's, all drivers need to be aware of.
I mean, a student was hit by, not by a truck, but, um, had he been hit by a truck.
Oh, yes.
This would have been a fatality.
Right.
So that's why I'm, I'm, I'm concerned about the, uh, the size of these, you know, huge, huge trucks wouldn't. You know, make it, uh, you know, we wanna make, you know, uh, part of the charm of the, of the university and part of the attraction of the town is this mingling across, you know, that students can walk across the street and feel, feel safe and, uh. Right now, I'm, I'm not sure that that's, that's the case. So that's what I want to be, you know, provide students and their families with greater assurance that that would be the case.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna attend a meeting, uh, in Kingfield that pertains to the rebuilding of the, uh, of the border crossing at Cogan Court. And I'm su- I'm sure that that conversation is gonna include a discussion of the fact that that's gonna actually generate increased truck traffic, uh, because they're gonna expand that, um, entrance, they're gonna make it more modern and, uh, uh, more attractive as a location. So I'm, I appreciate your, your, your tone and your approach and I'm, I live on twenty-seven. And the more we talk about moving the trucks onto Town Farm Road, if there's a way to do it, um, the better, as far as I'm concerned. I, I do wanna say though, that I was a little distressed by the, by the, the outrage that was expressed in some of the written material that I read. Because it suggests that there, nobody's been paying attention to this intersection and that's just so untrue. The town and the college is focused on that intersection over and over again, trying to figure out a way to make it safer. It is not something that anybody has neglected. It's all about engineering and strategy and trying to figure out a way to make it safer. I mean, in fairness, the, the college is agonized for years over the fact that they put Scott Hall on, on the west side of, of Main Street, west side of a state highway. But we're, I mean, we're thrilled that they did because it meant the college stayed in downtown Farmington. And I understand that, but it's, it's not a problem that just happened yesterday. And, uh, it's just not fair for anybody, faculty member, anybody, to suggest that, that we, you and your administration and this town have not been focused on that intersection, 'cause we have.
Yeah, well, that's why I came here.
And it was moved down, what, thirty yards?
Well, we took one, no, we, we've had two and then we, we took one out.
Yeah, I mean, that.
One on South Street, which is terrible.
To make it more difficult and.
People would come up the hill and then all of a sudden there'd be a crosswalk.
Yes, yes.
It's such a sad circumstance because it has worked better, although those foolish blinking lights are a disaster. And they don't work there, they don't work in front of Dunkin' Donuts, it's just a bad product and we need to move on from it. And I guess those were, actually, those were yours, it turns out. But it doesn't make any difference, they're bad anyway.
There's a, it's sort of a question about that.
Ours are bad, yours are bad, everybody's got it.
Yeah.
But anyway.
Yeah, well, I mean, um.
We just need to keep working on it.
Yeah, yeah, which is, really my message is just, just to work together. And it's a, uh, we, we have the same interest, the safety of the, of the community. And, and so I think if we can work towards, uh, that, uh, together, we'd be better off. And, and so, yeah, I.
I agree.
You know, you, you cannot control what, uh, your constituents say and I can't control.
I understand, but I can, but I can react to it.
My constituents say, well, yes, we.
And common sense goes a long ways on both sides. That needs to be reiterated a lot.
Right, and, uh.
So.
And that's what, that's what we're looking for, we're looking for some commonsensical, uh, approaches, which, you know, I think in, you know, working to make the place safer is, you know, really what we want to do and certainly to look ahead and, you know, prevent a fatality from, from happening.
If possible.
Yeah, just a comment that, uh, I, I think one of the messages that needs to be reinforced. I drive both Main Street and High Street on a regular basis. And I watch pedestrians that don't watch me. And particularly change of class time, when they're all gonna beat the traffic because they're a hell of a lot faster than I am. But being in the crosswalk does not make you bulletproof. You still have a responsibility to look. You may be in the right, and I believe this poor kid was, okay? But that doesn't mean that you are safe. You have to assume the other guy isn't paying attention. So it is, that's a combination of both sides, distracted drivers, distracted kids, uh, unfortunately. And it happens on a, again, multiple times a day. It happens on a regular basis that I see that and they just don't acknowledge, I'm in the crosswalk. God bless you, you'll be in the hospital and that won't make you feel any better.
Yeah, yeah, and so what we want to do, you know, we have to, uh, take into account the, uh, um, that pedestrians are not as responsible as they ought to be and sometimes drivers are not as responsible.
Most definitely.
As they ought to be. But our job is to, despite that, find ways in which we can prevent an accident from happening.
Right, the goal here is to try to create it as safe as possible and.
Yeah, we can't change human nature, we can educate as much as we can, but.
Keep up in this process.
Right.
But the goal is not to have an accident and that's, that's going to require, I think, some change. So I just wanna work with you on that.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I'm sure we'll be talking in the near future.
Very good, so thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate all you do for the town too.
I, I just wanted to address Dick's statement about the lights. The new lights are, they're not, the new ones are much better. However, uh, and I point this out for the members of the public, much along the same lines that Dennis was talking about. I actually believe, and I, I do come out of a public works background, I believe that those lights are actually more of a harm than good. And the reason that I say that is because drivers are more focused on that flashing light and looking towards the sign than they are looking at the people in the street. And the other problem is that it gives pedestrians a false sense of security. People think they can hit that button and proceed and everything's gonna be okay. And it's not, um, it's not. And I, I get, I, I've seen people do it, I've seen plenty of activity on both driver's sides and pedestrian sides driving around here. I can say there are drivers out there that purposely try to speed up to the crosswalk. They try to scare the person in the crosswalk. I witnessed it right after we had the accident in November and I couldn't believe that this was behavior after there was a pedestrian fatality. And at the same time, the same, in this exact same incident where I see this driver speeding up to the crosswalk and there had been a person in the crosswalk, um, proceeding very slowly, head in phone, never looked up to see that this vehicle was coming at high speed. I was ready to lay on my horn because I was afraid she was going to get hit. So no amount of safety equipment that we put out there is going to solve human behavior. We still need to be as careful as we can. That said, between Phil and I, we're committed to moving forward with trying to come up with new streetscapes and things that are going to be, um, mitigating as much as we can. I'm just not sure that those flashing lights are the right answer. I think they actually do the opposite. I think they're new and I think eventually we'll see some studies come out on that, um, that show that they're not quite as great as we thought they would be. So I just, please, everybody, please, watch out for yourselves, you know?
That's good.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right. Still in other business, so. Byron, did you have anything?
I'm also.
Sure?
No, I think I'll do it.
Yep.
Yeah, I just have one item, just with regard to the fiscal year issue. I'm, I'm not saying anything subjectively protesting, I just want a, a schedule. Once we get past town meeting, you had mentioned that we're gonna need to have some public outreach or public meetings or something.
That would be my suggestion, it's, it would be up to you all how you go about that. I mean, again, by statute, it's your decision. Obviously, we had some opposition in the discussion the other day, but I think we heard from a very small portion of the population. But I, I think to allay fears by misinformation that gets out there, such as people are gonna have to pay two years taxes in one year, it might be a good idea to do some informational outreach.
I agree, so I'm asking that, that the administration come up with a kind of a calendar or a schedule that would get us to whenever you want it, whatever period in the year you wanna get to when there's a decision made in the upcoming year. January, February, December, I'm not sure from the structural standpoint of creating a six-month budget and I don't know what you'd want the timing to be. But I would, I would like to move towards that with some kind of a schedule.
Yeah, we had six taxpayers out of, what, thirty-two hundred tax bills, uh, that's not exactly a majority, even though it was a vocal and, and passionate group.
What, what percentage of town meeting goers though? I said, what percentage of town meeting go?
Well, six out of, what, fifty-two-hundred-and-eighty free possible voters that could go. So that's still a rather miniscule, I said one, but, uh, I know, I have nothing.
I would like, you have one more then.
Oh.
I know, I, I. And everybody up here knows, this is these two guys' last meeting.
Just like we applied?
No, not yet. So Byron, I'd like to thank you, you know, you've done your term, it's, uh, you've added a lot, you know? I hope you do stay involved, so, um, and Josh, obviously you've been here for, rather it seems like, it's gonna seem strange coming in on next meeting. Not having you here. Very much appreciated, you know, your leadership and it'll be missed, I know you won't be quiet, but.
No.
You'll, you'll still be very vocal and very much appreciated, but just wanted to thank, you know, thank you. That, that could be.
Anyways, yes.
But it is much, much nice, appreciate it. So it's not, everybody thinks it's kinda easy to sit up here and we're willy-nilly and everything, but there's a lot more that goes to it, it's.
They always tell me anytime you can do it.
I know.
Yeah, no, I was thinking about it today, my oldest was four when I started, he's a junior.
Yep.
It's kinda crazy to think about my small wife. We have three kids and, uh, see, and our youngest would have had a year. I'm wise.
She is, is much appreciated.
That's quite a chunk of it.
Echo those comments.
Thank you. I do not have anything else.
Motion to adjourn, you looking forward?
Yeah, we're.
Oh? If you, but sure, if you just wanna state your name, so that we can get it down.
My name is Dave Delletti, I'm a U M A student and I came here kind of to speak about the same thing. I won't beat a dead horse because President McDonald kind of spoke very well to the, um, fact of, kind of, the university's standpoint on the events that happened last week. And, um, to kind of give some info about myself, I'm a, I'm studying geography and environmental policy and planning, so I kinda have, spent quite a bit of my time in my undergraduate, looking at town planning and seeing what towns could do. So I appreciate kind of what you guys do and I appreciate kind of the time you've spent and the time that Erica and Phil have spent kind of talking about what we do to improve the town, um, efforts to kind of prevent any accidents happening in the future to the best of both our capabilities, both as a town and as residents. But I did also want to, uh, express that, like, on campus, I am what we call a community assistant, also known as like N R A. So I'm kind of a middle person between a lot of the residents of the campus and resources. So my intention for coming here to this meeting and kind of expressing concerns about what happened on behalf of a lot of my residents. And, you know, again, I won't be, I won't be the first that's had, um, quite the beating for this meeting. But, um, I did just want to ask your opinion as the select board of what information can I take to my residents on campus of people who are concerned about the current state of the infrastructure in town, people who are nervous to use the crosswalk, for example. A lot of the disgruntled people that sent emails, you know, a lot of them have come to me as well. So I've heard quite a bit of that, um, quite a bit of those emotions. And I just wanna make sure that I'm being a good middle person between the town and the residents on campus and that I'm helping President McDonald, the, um, mission to continue a good relationship between the campus and the town. And, you know, we don't, we're, we're gonna make an effort to kind of have that conversation about being safe in crosswalks and stuff like that. But I also wanna make sure that I'm able to bring to my residents a message of, okay, this is kind of what the town is doing and this is the timeline and making sure that there's transparency between the town and them. Cause a lot of people are just, they feel like not a lot is being done and that's, you know, whether that's misinformation, disinformation or just, you know, blind anxiety about the circumstances. I just, I was wondering if there's a message I could take to my residents of, these are the following steps. This is the timeline, you know, and making sure that that conversation is being had as time progresses.
I mean, I think Phil was pretty clear when he was talking about his timeline on the.
Yep.
On Main Street, which would go, uh, the first phase goes to basically that intersection, Phil, just about beyond that?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, in conjunction, like say, with the university and town's concern and, you know, conforming together, I guess, working towards this project, um, I guess what information that, you know, I can best explain is that during this whole design process, um, we're gonna invite the university for pre-construction meetings and input and gathering. And then also we're gonna have, you know, public meetings as well. So I think that we're all gonna work together through this whole process from the first phase all the way through the last phase. And, you know, to reassure that, you know, everyone's, you know, uh, vision. know, vision is, I guess, overall is fulfilled. And the, you know, the key to this whole project is purely safety.
Awesome. And I appreciate that. I'm not sure if I said before, but I do appreciate kind of the expedited steps that were taken to kind of react to this, because I know that, you know, the quick response time was somewhat reassuring to a lot of people. But I felt like my, you know, coming to this meeting was also important because I wanted to be knowledgeable in kind of what the town's doing as well.
So the project that he's referring to is a project that is going to rebuild Main Street essentially from Center Bridge.
Yeah.
All the way up through town. So there's going to be a lot of engineering that involves the area coming from Center Bridge, past Tippick Field and up the hill.
Yeah.
And then the area that's crucial to this conversation, and then forward up past the post office and up through Main Street. So that's a, the construction timeline is 2026.
Yeah.
But that is a significant change.
Yeah.
And that's, I think that's an important message to take back, that in addition to the short term, trying to make that as safe as we can, that there is a, there is a very detailed engineered plan that is being developed to reconfigure or to look at that entire stretch.
Yeah. And, again, I appreciate that that's being done, and I appreciate that that conversation's being had in this kind of setting, so that information is being given to the public.
That has been something that's been going on. That's not a need your reaction.
No, no, no.
It's not that in November.
Yeah, I know, kind of like, it would be crazy if that was that quick of a response or something like that.
Yeah, that's a statement that I could work that out.
But another thing that I did want to kind of just ask, because, you know, I wasn't aware, or I wasn't, I didn't have a clue of like what the right procedures were for people that were concerned to express those concerns to the town. Because I know nobody likes receiving disgruntled emails or, you know, messages and, you know.
I know what we do.
I'm sure you receive enough of it. So, you know, I just, because I know there are issues with like, say, the lights, which I also agree probably do more harm than good. But, you know, those lights have been having issues for multiple weeks, and I know I've placed multiple reports of it. So when I'm going to my residents and saying, I've reported that three weeks in a row, and it's still not fixed, and then someone gets hit, you know, I'm not sure what the best line of communication is. I guess is what I'm trying to express here. I want to make sure that I'm, like, if there are concerns about things like that in town, what is kind of the best way for me or for another resident to contact?
So your first step would be to contact the Public Works Director on those type of complaints?
Okay.
If you feel you're not getting anywhere that way, then it comes to me.
Okay.
Then if you're disgruntled with me, then you go to them. You can always go to them anyway. They are your elected representatives. There's nothing stopping you from going to them.
Yeah.
But I've got my hand on the boots on the ground. So I will say that my understanding is the electrician at UMF had been working on those lights for about two weeks. Their can tank risk, that old style does not, it's not good anyway. So it was very difficult. It took getting our crews in there to help with that, finally, to get it back up and running. You know, it would be probably good if we had been involved earlier. But there's always an outlet. So nobody gets into these jobs without having somewhat thick skin as far as getting disgruntled emails.
Yeah.
I think we would rather get those emails and have a chance to respond than to have a bunch of people that are upset that we don't even know the issue's out there, or get blindsided when everybody shows up with their pitchforks and torches, and we didn't even know there was an issue to begin with. So I would encourage anybody that has issues. I've talked to quite a few students now, at least via email, because I tried to respond to everything that came in. I spent the majority of Thursday and Friday, that's what I was doing, was trying to make sure I talked to everybody that had voiced a concern. They can always do that. Make sure that they know that, you know, if they go on the town's website, my email's right there. It's really easy, but I don't expect people to remember it. It's townmanager@farmington-main.org. It's, you don't even have to know my name. So that's out there. You can always call the Public Works Office. Now, they are field employees, so you may not get an answer right away. But when you call the town office, somebody will always answer. And not just complaints, but if there's ideas, like, would, would, I saw this in another town. Would this maybe work here? Maybe it will, maybe it won't. But I don't pretend that we've seen everything that could possibly be out there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it helps to get feedback from our residents, from our businesses, from the students, from the faculty. So don't hesitate to reach out to us.
And I know, I appreciate that. I'm sure the rest of the university does as well. So I appreciate it all.
If you go on the town website as well, all of our email addresses there, as well as our phone numbers. And we encourage you, please call us. You know, I think in the ten years I've been here, I think I've gotten like four emails from our resident and a couple of phone calls. So we don't know, you know, reach out.
I've gotten like four emails.
I blocked you a long time ago.
It isn't always, I mean, I don't always consider as, like, a situation like this, if you're reaching out to the town saying the light isn't working, I don't consider that as a complaint. I consider that as more of a notification, like, oh, okay, all right, that's good to know. Or, there's a gigantic puddle on this street, you know?
That's coming up.
It's really not a complaint. It's like, hey, there's a hole in this street, you can, you know, just so nobody's aware. Or the street's flooded, you know, it's not a complaint. But, I mean, I always view those different. I mean, when somebody's just going on about something that you're like, oh, okay, what do you want me to do about it?
Yeah.
That's kind of different. But in this circumstance, something that can be addressed at top of the sale sooner than later.
That goes to the territory.
Yes, you, yeah.
So I'm Ken Charles. I'm the Chief of Police. And thank you guys for being here and for being engaged. I mean, I think that, you know, that's a big part. You get to watch the sausage being made here, and it isn't pretty, obviously. Sorry.
I'm not offended. I like sausage.
You know, but, but just a few things. I mean, something that you said that struck me was you were looking for something that you can bring back to people. And having read, I mean, I don't know, I bet, did we get fifty to a hundred emails?
I copied you on every one.
That's right. Yeah, so.
Sorry, it's not my name.
Yeah. But, you know, kind of some common themes were, it felt like people were feeling like they were powerless.
Yeah.
And that they were seeking for us to make them feel safe. You know, kind of encourage people to change the narrative in their own head.
Yeah.
You know, think about the things that they can do to make themselves feel powerful, that they feel that they're, they have control over their own destiny. You know, think about things like, you know, what are the things that I have control over? We barely have control over whether those lights are going to work or not. So what can you do? Back in November, as part of my press release in regards to the fatal crash, I encouraged everybody in the last sentence, I don't know if it was Pam or Dawn that did the article, but it was for, basically, you know, when, you know, I don't care if you're driving, and I don't care if you're a pedestrian, but make contact with that other party. And if they're not looking at you, or you're not looking at them, they don't know you're there, and they're not going to change how they do what they're doing, either driving or walking. So encourage people to take power over what they can do. You know, I, you know, it's one thing to stand at a, at a, at a crosswalk and, you know, get angry because people aren't stopping. Well, that's a whole hell of a whole lot better than just saying, you know what, I'm going to go anyway. You know, sometimes our sense of entitlement gets ahead of our common sense that was mentioned earlier. So counter that, you know. So now I'm the driver, and I'm approaching the person in the crosswalk, you know, rather than get angry, you know, slow down and, you know, just, you know, what am I going to give up? Five seconds out of my day to let somebody go by, you know? Instead of wanting to flip them off, why not wave to them? You know, give them a thumbs up, you know? You'll probably end up feeling a whole lot better about yourself and your day by putting a drop in their bucket instead of taking one out.
Yeah, no, for sure.
You know, I'd encourage people to, you know, I think, you know, it's interesting that he notes that it's the first-year students that are living in this, this particular dorm. You know, these are the people who are, you know, maybe coming from a large community to, you know, with a different dynamic to our community, different dynamic. Or maybe they're going from smaller, and Farmington is just a big city, it's big lights. I don't know who that would be. But ultimately, you know, we're incorporating people. I mean, they've still only been here on campus for, you know, four or five months, and, you know, it's still getting acclimated to the change, you know, from wherever it is that they're coming from. But, you know, I'd encourage people to, you know, to understand what the laws are. We're making some pretty big assumptions as to who has right of way, who doesn't, and when, you know.
That's, thank you.
You know, so you can just Google it, you know, Main Crosswalk Law, is there, whatever. Or if you get really horny, you can say, you know, Title 29A, subsection 2057, which were, you know, covers, you know, a lot of crosswalks and otherwise. But, you know, there's a little bit of something for everybody. I don't care if you're the driver or whether you're the pedestrian. But, you know, it's all right there. And it was our elected officials that, you know, that approved this stuff, and it's been on the books forever. So, you know, I started to think that enforcement is the answer here. You know, we did have some officers out there writing some, putting some pen to paper last week. So, you know, but, you know, again, people go back to their same behaviors. So, because it is, it's a human behavior issue. I don't think we're going to be able to effectively engineer ourselves out of the problem. It's a human behavior issue. And I'd be happy to come talk to your group, you know, if you ever have like a dorm meeting or something. I mean, I don't care. Talk about this, talk about whatever. But, you know, get faith in face-to-face with people, get involved, get engaged. It's too late to take out papers, so get on the slide board. You want to make change?
And our meetings are open. We meet twice a month. Everybody's always welcome.
If you can stand it.
Yeah, I mean, as you see, it is riveting.
There are there. But if I may follow up, the message to take back to your constituents, if you would, is be vigilant. Safety is your job, too. It's not just the other guy watching for you. You have a responsibility. And, yeah, I'd like to tag every one of those stinking driving, you know, red lights, stop signs, just as a suggestion. And it's a little thing. But when I go across the street from the post office, I always just give a quick nod to the people that stopped on those lights.
Yep.
And it's.
Makes it different.
Yeah. So I don't know. It's not that you have to do it, but I would, I would encourage the young people to do that, because it just sends a good message, both, and plus it shows people are paying attention. But it just sends a good message. And folks who live in bigger towns, where they don't have to think about that crosswalk, you know, there's beeping sounds, and everybody knows, there's a lot less of that acknowledgement of the, of the traffic. But here, particularly in those areas, there isn't. And it's just a nod, a hand wave. Well, as opposed to flipping the bird.
I think.
Just goes along with, I love it when a student goes across there and looks at me and just gives me a nod.
I think President McDonald ordered it wonderfully. Like, it's a responsibility that lies on both the driver and the resident, not on the person, you know. And I think where a lot of the concern was, and where a lot of what I'll be taking to my residents are, you know, there's projects in place. You know, that's my big takeaway from this, is that it's being worked on, and there's multi-year, multimillion-dollar plan to kind of make things safer. But I think really leading that message of it's kind of the job of both the driver and the resident, and in the meantime of these projects being worked on, being planned out, we may have to be a little more vigilant than, you know. There should always be residential vigilance of like, okay, if you're walking into a crosswalk, you might get hit if you don't pay attention. But, you know, that's what I'm going to take away. And I appreciate, once again, I appreciate all the comments and recommendations. And thank you.
Can I give you more questions? Ken, just not to be, just, yeah. You said they, you've been counting traffic there.
Yeah. We had the, we put the traffic counter in the vicinity. It's kind of a cobra box. I'm not going to do a poll, but, so it's been in place since Thursday, and we've had , get this, forty-two thousand vehicles going by, you know, twenty-one thousand in each direction.
That's crazy.
Just in that period of time. This is hot.
And this is March.
Yeah. So good reflection of what the volume is.
Yeah.
Interestingly, the average speed was twenty-four miles per hour. You know, it did show an outlier of eighty-eight, but.
Was that you that?
The cameras weren't working. I know they weren't working that night.
So sometimes you do get some outliers like that.
Yeah.
Was that about four-thirty in the morning?
Strong breeze.
Was that before the, like, speed?
Is the bourbon power there?
But, yeah, we got it in place pretty quick. But anyway, it's just, it's chain door holes, so I'm not afraid of that.
No, I expect, you know.
But it's a black Pelican-type car, and it has radar. Of course, the inbound traffic is a little bit slower, you know, because I think people are coming around the corner, they're coming up the hill, they're cresting, you know. We'd like to think that they're slowing down because they, there's traffic. But, and then it is a little bit quicker in the opposite direction. But, so it was an average speed of twenty-four with some outliers. I think eleven percent of them were of the, so what, four, you know, four thousand writable tickets technically, but we're using a very small window, you know, like, you know, because we know people are going to be three to five, you know, miles per hour, slow, or, anyway, the average speed is, I think, what's important, the enforceable violations. There's, there's much more that goes into that, that, you know, makes it a little muddy.
I want to stop people to know just how much traffic goes through this town. We're a small town, but that's a, that's a lot of cars in a five-day process, and this is March.
Yep, and my feeling is.
Wait till the busy season comes.
With the, with the Town Farm Road Project, you know, I think that's going to be, that's going to increase the quality of that road service, such that I hope it motivates, you know, self-initiated diversion of route out of our Main Street.
We do have that up for the Fourth of July week with the events?
We, yeah, we might be able to, we might be able to get some additional ones from Main DOT to put in different locations. So more specifically, you know, where are people coming from, and where are they going to? Are they coming in on Route Two and then turning into town, or are they coming to, you know, or Route Four?
Most people, yeah.
I know. Real good.
I can talk all right.
I know. I can too.
We're trying to get your hand.
But just trying to get our money for buying your last meeting.
I appreciate that.
Did you make your motion?
I tried to.
Okay. I'll start.
Oh, wait a minute.
I have an announcement.
Don't. She had, forgot.
I almost did. Thank you. And this is not on the topic of traffic or pedestrians or anything else, but it's on our budget. We are holding a public information meeting Wednesday night next week. That's the nineteenth. It will be here in this room. Mount Blue TV will be televising it. But myself and the department heads are going to be going over the 2025 budget, giving a presentation with a question-and-answer period afterward. So this is an opportunity for everybody to get a look at it before they go to town meeting and ask questions, rather than get to town meeting and go, I'm not even sure what I'm voting for. But this is, this is going to be the opportunity to get a good look at it and get some explanations for things you might not otherwise understand.
Mount Blue Live?
What about the annual?
Or can.
Will those be out soon?
They've been, they were ordered on the twenty-seventh of February, so we ought to be getting them anytime now.
Live, is Mount Blue going to be live?
Yes.
Okay.
Do we best?
Absolutely.
What's the date of the drive? Geez, you're coming? You've already heard all this.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
It's kind of a very productive, efficient meeting.
What's the date of that again?
It's Wednesday, the nineteenth, six p.m.
There's been a motion.
And a second.
A second. Better motion, a second, too.